You know I've traveled near and far to see the shining sea. I've seen a lot of places and people that were nice to me. One place that's in my heart and this is how I feel. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. She's nestled in the sand hills on a river called Cape Fear. Special to so many who proudly served our country here. She was named for Lafayette and known for cotton mills. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. Babe Ruth hit his first one hurt around the world. Sherman marched for the Union and burned the arsenal. Old Market House still standing but stands for freedom's will. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. My all-American city Fayetteville.
Well, good evening. We'd like to welcome you to the Monday, March 18th, 2019 Fayetteville City Council meeting. We have a couple of council members of our colleagues that will, are not here tonight, but we have one that will join us by phone. I think Councilmember Cullerton is, will join us by phone. At this time, we would ask that Pastor Gasper Rich of St. James United Holy Church if he would come to the podium. Ask that all would rise for the invocation as well as for the pledge allegiance and the post, the pledge allegiance.
I'm used to a pulpit. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, in the name of Jesus, Lord, we come before you tonight first and foremost to tell you thank you. Lord, thank you for this day. Lord, we ask that as we engage in this meeting on tonight, Lord, we ask that something be said wholesome for the community, Lord. We ask that you just bless each individual person that's represented here on tonight. Continue to bless the city of Fayetteville and then, Lord, bless us individually. We thank you. We give you praise for this meeting on tonight. In Jesus' precious name we pray. Amen.
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 God bless you, Jesus. To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor. If you, Pastor Rich?
Don't be.
If you wouldn't mind, would you like to tell us a little about yourself or your ministry?
Okay. Well, I'm Pastor Rich, Pastor of St. James United Holy Church on 503 South Cool Springs Street. I've been in the ministry since 2002. I became pastor of St. James in 2016 and we were flooded out two Sundays after I became pastor. As of now, we are renting and we are having service on Bradford Avenue, 321 Bradford Avenue. It's in the order of the tents building, but as of February 11th, we started our renovations. So to God be the glory. But you're invited to come to our church. We're on Bradford Avenue right now, 321 Bradford Avenue. Hopefully within three to four months, we'll be back on South Cool Springs Street, which is right down the road. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for joining us this evening.
Yes, sir.
At this time, we would ask Councilmember Jensen. I think we have special guests joining us this evening?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we do. Tonight, we have Shelby McLamb and yes, she is from the North Side. She is a Pine Forest senior. I have known Shelby for probably 15 years of her 18 years of life. She started out in the youth council in her 10th grade year and she is a senior this year, getting ready to graduate. And if I'm not mistaken, I'm not going to give out her number, but she is very on the top of her class, I will say. We'll say the top five and we'll go from there. So Shelby.
That's great.
Hi, my name is Shelby. I do go to Pine Forest. I live in District 1 and in the month of February, the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council had successful community projects such as our Kindness Matters movement that focused in local high schools in the area as well as our involvement with the Arts Council that focused on the True to Yourself movement, which was a youth discussion focused on overcoming adversity by staying true to yourself. I'm very pleased to say that the council is already off to a great start in this month of March. Just recently, 14 members of our council went to the National League of Cities in Washington DC and we walked away with some great ideas and some new techniques to make our community better. Thank you for all that you do. None of this would be possible without you.
Thank you for joining us. And we were well represented at the National League of Cities. Several council members, including myself, had a great time there and it was a joy to see you all representing the city of Fayetteville and our future. So thank you. At this time, we have a few recognitions. I will head to the podium. I defer to Councilmember Chris and the mayor pro tem. Councilmember Chris, you'll join me at the podium?
Yes, sir. I'd like to join you.
I'd have some words before you, before you join?
I can read it here just here.
So can we have Mr. Justice Cochran and family if he could meet us at the podium
I'd like to say a few things. I was reading the paper and every now and then we come across some good things in the newspaper. This young man is named Justice Cochran. He's a student at Westover High School. He's the kid that found the wallet that had $700 in it along with credit cards. And though his peers, many of them told him, "Man, keep the money and turn in the wallet", Justice did the right thing. He turned in the wallet. A businessman saw fit to reward him monetarily. I asked the mayor if he would invite young Mr. Cochran to City Hall so we could make a presentation to him and we're streaming live on TV, I hope, so that everybody in this city can see and appreciate this young man. It speaks to the notion that when these children of ours do something really good, we have to recognize them for these positive actions that they take. And so tonight, we're recognizing Mr. Justice Cochran.
We have a certificate of excellence presented to Fayetteville unsung hero extraordinaire, Justice Cochran. For your selfless actions embody the spirit of an unsung hero. We honor your values of courage and sacrifice, commitment and integrity, commitment to our great city of history, heroes and hometown feeling. Signed, Mayor Mitch Colvin.
We have something else. I want you to meet Ms. North Carolina. She's coming forward, okay? Victoria, you might introduce yourself.
Thank you. Hi, nice to meet you. So I'm Victoria Huggins and as you were so very kind to mention, I had a remarkable job last year. I was Ms. North Carolina, but I have an even better job now because I'm the manager of Community and Media Relations for the Fayetteville Woodpeckers. Go Woodpeckers! And we are an organization that wants to be known just as much for our community service initiatives and being involved in our community as we do winning baseball games, even though we are going to win a lot of baseball games. So we would like to present you with a Fayetteville Woodpeckers hat in addition to two opening game tickets to our home opener. Thank you for doing the right thing.
There you go. We want to get a picture of it.
We'll get it.
Thank you. Justice, do your family anyone have anything? Your father and your mother want to say something?
I really appreciate.
Speaking to the mic.
I said, "I really appreciate what the county has offered me" and I'm grateful for it.
We appreciate you, Mr. Ruth Smith.
And Councilman Chris, the Woodpeckers, there were actually six tickets in that packet. So two for, for him and there was an additional four that was being contributed so that the family can attend, so. And I'd like to ask Imam Adam Bayah of Masjid Omar Said if you could meet me at the podium, please?
Aye.
This, from the office of the mayor proclamation. Whereas on March 15th, 2019, 49 innocent lives were taken while worshiping in the Al-Nor and Lynnwood mosques in the city of Christchurch during Juma, the organizational prayer Muslims hold every Friday afternoon. And whereas the city of Fayetteville stands by New Zealand in the fight against terrorism and whereas one community, we mourn the victims of this unprovoked act of violence, we pray for healing and comfort for all family members and loved ones who are grieving. And whereas we all must rise up against violence, hate and bigotry of all races, religions and cultures, whereas with respect and compassion, we embrace diversity and celebrate our differences, cultures. And now therefore, I, Mitch Colvin, mayor of the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina, and on behalf of the city council and more than 208,000 citizens, do hereby honorably proclaim the 18th of March in the year 2019 in honor of Al-Nor Mosque and Lynnwood Islamic Center. Signed, Mayor Mitch Colvin.
Good evening. Peace to all the members of the city council and the citizens of Fayetteville. When I heard about this tragic incident, the first thing I thought, as many Muslims would say, Ina l'Ilahi wa Ina lehi ra'jeon, and that means, "From God we come and unto God is our return." Then I thought about another part of the Quran where God says, "Think that not those that have been slain in the way of God as dead, know they are living." So that gives us hope and give the family hope of the victims, that their loved ones, though they might have departed this sphere and this life, but we have hope that they're in a better place and that death is symbolic of what every human being that comes into the world since Adam will go through one day. Now, I do want to thank again the city leaders in making the stand and we pray and hope that this will not happen in our city. And we do all that we can to make sure that we are truly brothers and sisters in the creation of God and we treat ourselves with dignity and in that way. And again, thank you very much. I will share this with the community. God bless you all. Peace be upon you.
Thank you, Brother Bayah. And as I had shared with them prior to the start of the meeting tonight, you know, we had a unity service immediately following unfortunate incident in the Jewish community. Here we are again, standing in solidarity with members of the human race and the Islamic Muslim community. I told them that we will pray for a day in which we will not have these responses, in response to these tragic events, but that we would just join in unity for the spirit of unity and unification. So again, our prayers are with you and thoughts and prayers are with you. Thank you for joining us this evening. That's the least we could do. Counsel, at this time, we will move to approve the agenda. Look for a motion.
May I make a motion? We approve the agenda this evening?
Mr. Dawkins, that's a second. Okay. All right. Counsel, any discussion on the motion? There's a motion by Councilmember Wright, second by Councilmember Dawkins to approve the agenda. All those, I'll look to you for your votes. Councilman Cullerton?
Cullerton, green.
Madam Clerk, that is unanimous by those that are present.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Before the consent agenda, may I introduce a motion?
Yes, please.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we add an item 6.08 to the consent agenda, which is bylaws for the Millennial Advisory Commission. And I believe that this motion would require a super majority. Is that correct, Madam Attorney? Do I have a second?
Second, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Chris. Madam Attorney, will you speak?
So, Mr. Chris, you want to add it as a separate item or you want to do it under the appointments?
I want to do it under the consent agenda. Is that not the right place?
Certainly it is up to the council if you are so inclined. I thought that the discussion was that you would do it as a part of the report for the boards and commissions. For the, I'm sorry, for the appointments.
Procedurally, Madam Attorney, is it okay to do it in this manner or?
Yes, you can add an item with the super majority as Mr. Chris stated.
Which either option would require a super majority. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. So there was a motion by Councilmember Chris. There was a second by Councilmember Hare. Any discussion on the motion?
Can you repeat the motion, sir? I could not hear it.
The motion was by Councilmember Chris to add the approval of the bylaws of the Millennial Council or Commission to the consent agenda as item 6.08.
Okay, thank you.
Discussion, Mayor?
Yes, sir. Councilman Wright?
The question on this, if this is approved unanimously by the council, the contents of this, would it be known tonight or is it something that you want to present to us tonight?
I presented it to you in email, Councilman. You have this. We sent this to all council members.
Didn't you send it out?
Yes, sir. You have it.
Okay, I'll take a look at it.
All right, Counsel, any, Madam Attorney?
You may have overlooked it, huh?
Yeah, I did. I overlooked it.
Mayor, perhaps to address Councilmember Wright's concerns or to make sure that the citizens understand, perhaps it would be better to move it to item 10.01 for the appreciation, presentation of the Appointment Committee recommendations and then that would also give Mr. Chris an opportunity to elaborate on the proposed bylaws.
I have no objection to that, Mr. Mayor. If I may amend my, amend my motion to add that item to, as item 10.01A under the presentation of Appointment Committee recommendations.
So what we'll do is I will come back to you for that motion. We can't have two motions on the floor. I was trying to approve the consent agenda first and then...
Then I withdraw my motion for the consent agenda.
Okay, and then we'll circle back to it. Thank you. All right. So Counsel, item 6.0 is the approval of the consent agenda. Do we have a motion or is there any, any discussion? Okay. All right, have a motion. Councilman Waddell?
We're voting, aren't we?
No, we need a motion first.
I withdrew the motion.
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam.
Second.
Okay, I think, I think Councilmember Jensen was the second on that. So it's a motion by Councilmember Waddell. There's a second by Councilmember Jensen. Any further discussion on this item? All right, Counsel, I'll look to you for votes. Councilman Cullerton?
Cullerton, green.
Okay, Madam Clerk, that is unanimous by those that are present. All right, Councilman Chris? Yeah, so, Madam Attorney, so if we are adding a 10.01A and we have approved the agenda, it probably should have been reflected then, correct?
That's correct, Mayor, but I think you already have an item on the agenda for the presentation and this could be an additional item.
Okay, understood. All right. No need to overcomplicate it. I understand. Item 7.0's reports, 7.01 Stormwater Advisory Board Annual Report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilwomen and Councilmen. How's everyone tonight?
Good, good.
The PowerPoint? Looking for the, give me one second. It's okay. We have cliff notes. And I believe you, councilmembers, you should have a copy of this in your packet maybe? My name is Dino Honduras. I'm the city of Fayetteville Stormwater Advisory Board Chair. I apologize for not having the PowerPoint presentation. I have had the distinct honor of meeting many of you and look forward to meeting the rest of you. I speak for myself and I think I can speak for the rest of the members of the Stormwater Advisory Board that we're humbled to serve the citizens of Fayetteville and you all on the, on the board. Before I talk about the Stormwater Advisory Board, I'd like to talk about the city of Fayetteville Stormwater Program. The Stormwater Program is a comprehensive stormwater management program. It includes outreach and education on stormwater issues, impacts on the quality of life, preservation, preservation methods and the benefits to the environment. The program is responsive and sensitive to the citizens' needs regarding stormwater flooding issues and is compliant with the National Pollution Disposal Elimination System and all of the city of Fayetteville ordinances and regulations. The Stormwater Program is totally funded by the Stormwater Fee. Stormwater Program consists of two parts, quality and quantity. Quality, of course, is protecting the environment against the pollution and quantity is the infrastructure to prevent flooding. Both components are obviously funded by the Stormwater Fee. The Stormwater Advisory Board is constructed of five members. You all, the city council, appoint the members. Each of us serve two-year terms. Each member may serve up to two consecutive terms. And typically, our meetings are held here at City Hall at 5:30 PM the first Tuesday of every month, either in the Lafayette Conference Room or the Cape Fear Conference Room. Current members are myself as the chair, Mr. Jones, Tony is here. He's my co-chair. He's the veteran and the senior member of our committee. Him and Mr. Smalls and then Mr. Miller and Mr. Parks. Myself, Mr. Miller and Mr. Parks are new. We're rookies to this and we're learning as we go. The purpose of the Stormwater Advisory Board is to advise you all, the city council, on policies and plans on or to improve our stormwater program. We also provide the public mechanism, a public component that's required by the MPDES and we serve as a public voice to the, to the stormwater program. And we typically update you all with a presentation annually. I believe it's been about 18 months, give or take, since the last update. So the accomplishments are actually accomplishments of our predecessors, the previous board. They made a recommendation to the city council that a member of the Stormwater Advisory Board be added to the UDO Task Force. We adjudicated four stormwater violation appeals and we amended the Stormwater Advisory Board bylaws. Couple of challenges that as a board we've identified is the board size with everyone's busy schedule and everyone going 100 different directions. At times, it's challenging to meet a quorum. And also education of the Stormwater Advisory Board members. We've also identified some goals moving forward in the coming year in no specific order of importance. We would like to work with the newly appointed mayor, city council, Stormwater Committee. We would like to review draft ordinances regarding the city of Fayetteville's scope of responsibility on and off right of way, review capital improvement projects and the new watershed plans that are coming out or studies that are coming out. The capital improvement projects get reshuffled from time to time regarding priorities. So with the new watershed plans coming out, we suspect they may get reshuffled again. Review any outstanding stormwater bonds, review the Stormwater Fee Credit Program. And again, as I mentioned in the challenges, we've already had some... we've already had some preliminary discussion, but we would like to, uh, possibly make a formal recommendation to you all about, uh, increasing the size of our board. Currently at five members, possibly to seven or nine members. This would help twofold. Um, it, it could help us, uh, meet a quorum and also, if we stagger the, um, nominations where we retain roughly half of the members, it'll help with the education 'cause the, the half of the board that, that is existing can help the new members alone. And, uh, ultimately, look forward to making recommendations to the above and any other issues and priorities that may arise from time to time to you all as a council for consideration. And with that, I will take any questions.
All right, thank you. Uh... I don't see any lights. Councilman Dawkins?
Dino, I did have a, um, question. Um, say again why, uh, you wanted to expand, um, your advisory board?
Well, we haven't made a formal, uh, recommendation yet, but that's something we're looking to, uh, to do as a board. Um, I think, we, we believe it will help twofold. One, in, in helping us as a board meet a quorum, but also in, uh, in, uh, education. Um, as some of the new city council members, uh, may be able to relate, once you get on a board like this, it's a lot, it's kind of like sipping from a fire hydrant. You're getting a lot of information and if you haven't dealt with it on a day-to-day basis, it, it could be a lot to digest. So, we believe if we enlarge it from five members to either seven or nine and having those two-year terms staggered, so every year you're getting four or five new members, the new members can learn from the existing members.
Oh, I like it. I like it. I look forward to working with you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Uh, any other, any other questions, uh, council? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, do we need a motion to receive his report? Okay, so council, entertain a motion. Oh, oh, uh, uh, my apologies. Councilman Cullerton and then here.
Let me first thank Mr. Honduras for his volunteering, uh, his time to serve on this board and for this presentation. And perhaps this is not a question for him, but rather staff. Has there been a review of our stormwater management plan specifically with regards to Cedar Falls and Lock Creek subdivision? And if so, has that plan or review been presented to the board?
Councilman Cullerton, that was for the Cedar Creek or Cedar Falls, you said, subdivision?
Yes, Cedar Falls, Lock Creek.
There has been coordination ongoing with the county about a, uh, short-term plan to try to relieve some of the flooding in that area by clearing out Locks Creek and we are aware of it for longer-term strategic plans. It'll be part of our watershed study analysis when we, uh, when we kick that off here very shortly.
Okay, so there, there has been a review then of that plan and, and what I heard, and, and forgive me 'cause it was a little choppy, uh, that, uh, you are currently actively clearing out parts of Locks Creek in order to mitigate some of that flooding issues that they've had now.
We are working on the plan to clear it out. The actual work has not started yet, Councilman.
Do we have a timeline projected for that?
Not yet, but we will, uh, we will let you know as soon as we get one.
Okay, please, please, if you would, uh, most folks have been enjoying the lot over there. Uh, I want to let them know that we're doing everything we can. So, I would also be hearing from you, uh, when that timeline, uh, that actual works itself.
We will, thank you.
Thank you. I have no more questions.
All right, thanks, sir. Councilman here?
Mr. Chairman, you just stated that you all hadn't made a formal request for the addition of members, but you spoke of it this evening. Would that be considered a request? Would, would that be a part of our vote?
I'm gonna make a form recommendation?
No? Okay, all right.
There'll be one, there'll be a recommendation coming and it'll be...
I just want the clarity. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Uh, council, any further questions? All right, that will, uh, receive a, uh, look for a motion to receive the report as presented?
Motion to receive, sir.
There's a motion by Councilmember Harris, a second by Councilmember Jensen. Uh, she beat you to the trigger, uh, Councilman Dawkins. All right, any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for votes. Councilman Cullerton? Count, Council, Councilman Cullerton, for your vote?
He said green.
Oh, okay. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous by those present. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do. All right, item seven point zero two, the Joint Fayetteville Cumberland County Senior Citizen Advisory Commission, report?
Hello? Hello, good evening.
How are you?
I am Edna Cockdale, the chairperson for the Joint Fayetteville Cumberland County Senior Citizens Advisory Commission. We welcome the opportunity to provide a brief annual summary for you. If there are members of the commission here tonight, please stand. I think there's at least one, Mr. Carey, who is our vice president, is with us. If there, the primary purpose of this commission is to advocate for senior citizens in, within Fayetteville and throughout Cumberland County. Tonight, our senior information subcommittee chair, Mr. Willie Wright, will share with you a new project that we are working on.
Thank you, Mrs. Cockdale, and greetings.
Good evening, sir.
I would like to cover very quickly some of our most recent actions. Uh, we revised the bylaws. We met with Mr. Gibson to look at both the East Senior Citizens Building and also the West. And also, I would like to thank Mr. Crisp for his support that he gives to the commission. The commission is composed of fourteen individuals, seven from the city and seven from the county. We meet the second Wednesday of each month. Now, to begin my presentation, I would really like to state three facts. Last year, Fayetteville State University conducted a survey for the commission and determined that there are approximately thirty-five thousand individuals classified as senior citizens in Cumberland County. Fact number two, there are many resources available for Cumberland County seniors. And fact number three, which is probably the most important, that there is a lack of information getting to these seniors so they know how to use the resources. So, we are working on a plan for dissemination of informa- information to our senior citizens. And so, it's going to be conducted in two phases. You're familiar with Blue Street and I think you have on your desk one of the forms that shows the social groups that are under the auspices of Blue Street Senior Citizens Center. Four of our commissioners met with them a couple of weeks ago to talk to the chairpersons of those social groups. And we requested from the chairs that we be able to meet with these twenty groups and conduct a survey. Now, we will have someone from the commission meet with these groups at their location on their days that they meet in order to obtain information from these groups. So, starting on the twenty-fifth of March, one of our commissioners will meet with one of the groups. And we're truly concerned about safety issues, safety concerns, transportation, medical, and housing. Once we collect the information from these groups, you have a copy of the survey sheet that you can look at, we are going to collect that information, go through that information, and then in conjunction with the Cumberland County Library system, see if we can meet at all of the eight branches and start sharing this information with the senior citizens. Now, we are not going to get up and speak to these senior citizens. We are going to get the experts on the subjects. For example, transportation, we'll go to FAS and ask that one of their members come and speak to these groups. For the medical, Cape Fear Valley Hospital or some other medical entity. For housing, the Fayetteville Housing will be making the presentation. And for the safety, we'll have our sheriff and top law enforcement to be with us to share information with these groups. Now, this is a project that we are just beginning. We're working on it now and we expect by June, July to begin implementing this thing to get information out to our senior citizens. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Uh, any, any questions, council? I did have a question for Councilmember Crisp. How are you gonna be a member of, of the senior advisory and the millennials at the same time? I think I have Councilmember Wright.
Well, age is a state of mind. Somebody said that, right? I don't intend to be a member of the millennials, Mr. Mayor. That would be kinda hard for me to camouflage. I'd have to wear a wig, first of all, cover up the gray, but, uh, Colonel, Colonel Williams there, he could probably blend in with them quite well.
All right. Uh, Councilman Wright and then Jensen?
Uh, yes, thank you for the presentation. Um, Mr. Wright, I like your last name as well. Did a great job. You asked a question, uh, earlier in our conversation before the council meeting started about the definition of a senior citizen. I thought that was a, a great question. What, what is a senior citizen? Several people or agencies you asked didn't have it. Can you expound on that just a little bit?
I'd be happy to, very happy to. In one of our meetings, we got into a discussion of what is a senior citizen? And so, we decided to contact the North Carolina General Assembly. We went to one of our House of Representatives individuals and we were told that the North Carolina General Assembly does not have a definition for general, a senior citizen. So, next, we looked at, well, let's go to Congress. They certainly should have a definition. And through, uh, our Congressman Hudson's office, we got the emails out and we received a reply back. There is no definition of senior citizen. A senior citizen is defined by the organization that is providing service to the individuals in the United States. AARP starts with fifty-five. Congress says that if you are eligible to draw Social Security at age sixty-two, you are a senior, but they did not say a senior citizen. If you go to your computer and pull up what is the definition of a senior citizen, you will find that there is no true definition and the ages range all the way from fifty-five to sixty-two.
Thank you, sir. I wanted to ask you to expound on that so the listening audience and, and, uh, those that are here could, could hear and know. Um, because I think that we do ourselves a disservice in our communities because we have a great resource in senior citizens that that be defined. Um, I, I consider myself a senior citizen. I told you that as well. So, I just wanted to thank you because we are focusing on senior citizens in this city, in this county, and we want to make sure that we support our senior citizens. And the first thing is we need to know what a senior citizen is. So, thank you, sir. I appreciate, uh, the presentation.
Thank you, Councilman Wright. Councilman Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just wanted to make a statement and when people come and come on boards and commissions, I think that sometimes they don't feel that they're making the difference, but I do want to let you know that your committee has definitely made the difference because when we were dealing at the Parks and Rec Bond Committee and we were designing and trying to figure out what we were gonna put in the senior centers, um, your voice was listened to. Mr. Crisp made sure your voice was listened to. And I thank you because you gave us a perspective on just the, the details that we needed to know that we might not have thought of as a committee, looking over there that y'all took it and were very serious about it and we appreciate it and we hope that we're gonna make you proud when we, um, um, cut that ribbon on Senior Center West and East. But thank you for your service.
Thank you, Councilmember Jensen. And thinking of, uh, speaking of senior citizens and undefied, we have a young man on our di- desk who's celebrating a birthday today. So, I'll call on Councilmember Dawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I want to thank, uh, Mrs. Cockdale, um, for your work you've been at a long time. Um, we started this back in ninety-seven, ninety-eight, seniors call to action team. I know Colonel Wright, um, was involved. Thank you for your service, sir, Colonel, sir. Um, now, when we get to our, um, because of the Parks and Rec Committee led by Council Lady Jensen, when we get, we get the seniors west built, we get the senior center east built, are you planning on using both facilities or how, how is that going to work with your, um, commission? Cause I want to see you using both. I want to see you spreading it out. We have a lot of seniors, not that Sergeant Major Crisp is a senior yet, cause, uh, technically there's no definition. But, uh, since he lives out in the west, I'm hoping you're not going to ignore the west, uh, because the east is just easier for you.
I'm, I'm sure we'll try to go to both of them along the way, but certainly where you live makes a difference as to which one you go to. So, we believe that both of them will be stellar examples of what we'd like to have for senior citi- senior citizens.
Thank you. I'm, I'm just sixty today, so Colonel, sir, I'm, I'm not sixty-two, so I'm not a senior yet, but maybe we'll have them ready when I turn sixty-two.
Oh, you're a senior, buddy. You, you are a senior.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Councilman, uh, Crisp?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to take a moment. Mr. Berg, please stand up. Mr. Berg was the chair of this commission for several years, a dynamic leader. He stepped down now and Mrs. Cockdale has stepped in as the chair and is doing a unbelievable job. But in reference to what Councilwoman Jensen said about, we listened to him. It was in one of the meetings, Mr. Berg, I believe, was chairing it, and Mrs. Cockdale and another lady spoke up and said, uh, words to the effect, "Y'all gotta do something better in their ladies bathroom for Senior Citizens Center West." And we heard them loud and clear. And so, we went back to the planning board, modified, uh, the ladies bathroom. There are, as, as Colonel Wright pointed out, over thirty-five thousand citizens in this community by our survey through Fayetteville State University. We consider them seniors, whether they're fifty-five or sixty, uh, we still consider them seniors and this committee is dedicated and devoted to making life as comfortable as possible for those citizens that may consider themselves seniors as well as those of us that might say fifty-five is the mark. I joined ARP when I was fifty-five. My wife wasn't quite fifty-five, but they took her on as a member as well. So, the emphasis here is on what we can do for those of us whose hair is turning gray and for those of us whose hair is thinning out, uh, Councilmember Dawkins. It looks like you gotta wait two more years to be a bona fide senior. Thank you for what you're doing. Thank you so much.
Okay, all right. Thank you all for the work that you do and for your contribution to, uh, to valuable part of our population.
May I move to accept the report of the, uh, senior citi- the Fayetteville Cumberland County Senior Citizens Advisory Commission?
So, I have a motion by Councilmember Crisp, a second by Councilmember Dawkins. Uh, any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for votes. All right, Council, I'll look to you for your votes. Councilman Colleton?
I'm green.
Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Thank you. Item seven point zero three, Board of Appeals Annual Report. Good evening.
Good evening. How you doing, Mr. Mayor, the City Council? It's a pleasure to be here tonight. The report of the Board of Appeals. Mayor and members of the City Council, my name is Anthony Farley, Chairperson of the Board of Appeals. The City of Fayetteville Board of Appeals is a new board, established on October the first, two thousand and fifteen. Through revision of the city code, we're eliminating the Board of Appeals, the Dwelling Buildings, the Taxicab Review Board, and the Residential Rental Property Review Board, better known as RAMP. The Board of Appeals is a quasi judicial body responsible for hearing and deciding the appeals or the issues of the city deciding orders related to violation of Chapters fourteen, Building and Dwelling Ramp, and Nuanced Properties, Chapter twenty-two Nuanced Ramp Lots, and Chapter twenty-six Tax Cabs in the city codes. In deciding on the appeal, the board may vary in the application of provision of Chapter fourteen, twenty-two, and twenty-six to a particular case whom, when is, and its opinion, the enforcement will consist, and justice will be contrary to the spirit or purpose of the city code or public interest, or when it is opinion, interpretation of the city staff should be modified or revoked. With the exception of Taxicab Appeal hearing, if closed hearing is requested, appeal hearings are open to the public. However, testimonies is restricted to the appellant. The appellant witnessed, city staff, and city staff witnessed. The appellant is not required to be present in the appeal hearing. The appellant may also have a representative appear at the hearing to act on the appellant behalf. Upon considering the testimony, evidence presented at the hearing, the board may either affirm, modify, affirm, or revoke a related city decision and orders. An appeal board decision must be filed with Superior Court within fifteen days from receipt or notification of board decision. The Board of Appeals is composed of five regular members appointed by the City Council through, for three-year stage terms. Three members of the board consist, constitute a quorum, conduct business of board appeal hearing or held as needed at the first Thursday of each month at six p.m. in Lafayette Conference Room. The members of the board are yours truly Chairperson, Mrs. Stella Mullin, Vice Chair, with members Thomas Neal, Ms. Cherie Dupree, and Ms. Vanessa Icon. Since the last report to City Council, there had been two appeals for the housing code violation here by the board. Each of the appeals were denied by the board. This concludes my presentation. And I'd like to say thank you, City Council, and Mr. Mayor, for the work y'all doing. We, as citizens, we see everything out there on the streets, and we appreciate the work y'all doing.
Thank you. It's a partnership, and we appreciate you volunteering and making a contribution to it as well. Do have a couple of questions. Don't know what order they came up, but I'll go with ladies first. Councilmember Waddell?
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. So the acronym ramp, the words that you used were Residential Action Management Program.
Yes, ma'am.
How does that differ from the Rental Assistance Management Program, that ramp? Are you, do you know?
I'm not familiar with that. This is my first year as a chairperson, and that program was thrown away before I joined the board.
Right.
Mr. Swanson is here. He may come better answer that question for you.
That's, that would be great.
Yes, ma'am.
And the reason I ask is because I had a question come up about ramp recently, and I would just like some clarification
Yes, ma'am.
on the differences between the two.
The ramp program, it was an enforcement program for residential properties for landlords, and when the ramp program first started, I believe it was in two thousand and twelve, the way it was set up was that any residential rental property that had more than three verified code violations had to register for the ramp program. They had to register their properties, and there was a registration fee of a thousand dollars. And then if they had a subsequent violation within a year, then they, they were no longer allowed to rent the property. Well, it, I believe it was in two thousand seventeen, the state legislature changed that, and verified violations were redefined as an actual violation where the, if the landlord debated the violation within a certain period of time, then it couldn't count as a violation. So as of today, we've been tracking those types of violations, and we haven't had any that would fit that category. But the ramp program was strictly an enforcement program for code violations.
This ramp program or the previous ramp program?
Well, they both are now, but the previous, the previous program was a lot more conducive to, is a deterrent, and the changes, you know, without going into a lot of detail on it, the changes in the definitions took that deterrence away because the verified violations were changed to where it had to be a violation, to where they actually didn't debate it. And that's what changed it. Now, what was the other program that you mentioned first?
No, that was it. It was the Rental Assistance Management Program versus Residential Action Management Program. So residential action is also in reference to code enforcement? Or in...
Well, the residential assistance is not a code enforcement program.
So this ramp, residential, I'm looking at this residential action management.
Management program. It was strictly an enforcement program. The two are not related at all.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Colvin.
Okay. Councilman here.
Gentlemen, and I don't know which one of you all could answer this either, Mr. Swanson or Mr. Farley, but many, many years ago, it could have been back as far as between two thousand and ten, two thousand and twelve, there were a lot of concern from businesses, property owners, on and on and on, where there was a instant fine could almost be set against a property owner for whatever the case was. I can't exactly remember. It could have been in real estate rentals. It could have been, I can't exactly remember, but I did not see an amount, any kind of figures in here. So correct me to understand, if it comes before you and there's some form of finding, financial finding, does this committee, because that was one of my pushes back in those years, to set up where the property owners would also have an opportunity to come in to appeal that particular fine? Is this what you do also?
No, this Board of Appeals does not deal with fines. What they're dealing with is the city findings where somebody is in violation of the code, of which the person that's being found to be in violation appeals that to the board, and then the board makes a rendering on that based off of the finding and facts that are presented, or testimony that is presented by either the appellant and the city. In the event that they, the appellant does not get a favorable decision, and the Board of Appeals upholds the city's action, and there's, from that point, there's no compliance, then what would happen is we issue a civil penalty citation, and that process there, there is an appeal process.
There is an appeals process?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
It's before the city hearing officer.
Right. I just wanted to make sure, I remember years ago, I wanted to make sure that that was still in effect and still in place.
It's still going.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. All right, Council, any other questions? All right, we'll need a motion to receive this report. Councilmember Waddell?
I make a motion that we receive the report from the Board of Appeals, their annual report.
It's a motion by Councilmember Waddell. Is there a second? Second by Mayor Protem. Any discussion on the motion? All right, Council, I'll look to you for your votes. Councilman Colleton?
I'm green.
All right, Madam Clerk, that is unanimous by those that are present. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Council, we move now to the public forum. This is a time that any Fayetteville resident may have input and a voice into what goes on in their city. Due to policy restrictions, the forum will not last any longer than thirty minutes, and each speaker will be limited to only three minutes to address the City Council on issues related to the City of Fayetteville. Individuals wishing to speak at tonight's public forum should have signed up with the city clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. If you are here to speak on these items that may be on tonight's agenda under the public hearing, I ask that you would please reserve your comments until the public hearing. So when your name is called by the city clerk, we ask that you would come to the podium. Please clearly state your name and home address for the record. Then when you see the light located on the podium change from green to yellow, means you have thirty seconds left to speak. When you see the red light come on, that means your time has expired. And again, due to policy restrictions, we're unable to extend the given time. With that being said, Madam Clerk, would you like to call your first speaker?
Mayor, we have four speakers signed up for this evening. Our first speaker is Mr. Omar Kalim.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, my name is Omar Kalim. I live on Bombay Drive. On October eighth last year, after Hurricane Florence, several residents in my community came here to ask the city for a battle, do a constant extreme flooding that's been going on for the past several years. I was here to support them. I didn't speak. I just wanted to see what would happen in the next six months. Well, I'm here tonight because obviously we are nowhere with that process, and I'm even wondering if the city is planning on considering our request. Reason I say that is because constructions are still going on in Bombay Drive. New residents are still moving in in the community. District Two City Council, I'm hoping he can hear me. You are our first call. You firmly believe in putting people first and fighting to give your constituents a strong voice on council. I mean, I don't know, because we never heard from you. You are a former city, you are a former chair of the city's planning commission. As an experienced city planning commission, we would expect you to be out there and explain to us what the problem is and what you're planning to do for us. On October twenty-seventeen, you said, and I quote, "Too many are still suffering the aftermath of Hurricane Matthew. We need to finally address the shortfalls in our infrastructures, including stormwater." You said that you intend to leverage your experience in planning to better forecast our future needs as well, and yet constructions are still going on in an area that we all know is going to flood. Fifteen feet from my house, we still have a overflow creek just waiting for any wind to flood my house. You are all committed to the city. You are all want what good for the city, and yet you let developers and builder companies like Legacy Homes, who built most of the houses in Bombay Drive, to build homes the way they feel like it. As long as they follow the housing and code enforcement, it doesn't matter where and how they build them. We are in March, and we are still recovering from Hurricane Florence and far from fully recover. We already thinking about the next hurricane season. With that being said, do have a couple of questions. What are we supposed to do for the next hurricane season? What do you suggest that we do? Evacuate our house again for three, four months? Come back here again and talk about it? Like my neighbor said, we want out. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk?
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Robert Walls. Mr. Robert Walls. Not here. Our next speaker is Mr. Ken Pierce. Mr. Ken Pierce. Not here. Our next speaker is Mr. Iman Iranami Mohammed Smith.
The Senator himself.
What happened to the honor roll? Hope you're doing well. Praise is due to Almighty God, the Lord of all the worlds. I am Imam Iranami Mohammed, the Amir of the city, the Amir of the state of North Carolina, and founder of the Fayetteville Muslim Community, and founder of the Masjid Al Min Said, and a Vietnam Vet. We are very thankful and grateful for this opportunity. We have a lot of progress that we're making, and we definitely want to see the city council respond to those, the hurricane and FEMA and their assistance, because if you don't, guess who they're going to come and get? Me. First of all, we want to thank everyone for the great support of the baseball stadium across the street, and let it be known, we thank Almighty God that the North Carolina Legislative Black Caucus, as well as the President Barack Obama's team, and myself particularly, we're very pleased. We're pleased with all of it, including the name of the team. It's all about a labor of love, in case you didn't pick that up, and the people love it. My school, Fayetteville State University, seven hundred students on the way back to the university. The North Carolina Legislative Black Caucus is helping bring the students back and cleaning up the doors. The lights are on now for almost a month at daytime and nighttime. For those who need information about my involvement with the two ninety-five Business Loopes and the Fayetteville Observer Newspaper nineteen ninety-two, ninety-three, and ninety-four, Iranami Mohammed wants to build a loop around the city of Fayetteville. The lawyer, Michael Matthews, helped bring the paperwork to the City Council that particular year. The other thing is, my team is in North Carolina Legislative Black Caucus. That's my team for thirty-five years. For those of you who may not be aware, I'm more involved on a state level when they turn on television, Channels Five and Channel Eleven. Those individuals at the Raleigh Islamic Center, which is a five billion dollar facility with a lot of lawyers and Imams from around the world, those are my close friends. When they have a conference like the one that's on this past weekend, I'm usually there. Couldn't be there this weekend, there's so much going on. Clearly, our young people want a soccer facility to play soccer, to play soccer. They want a skating park so they don't have to skate on the sidewalks out front. So somebody has to be their voice, and sometime it's got to be me. In terms of East Smith High School, we're very pleased. I've asked my legislative caucus to build us a new one at the football field. Developed on Murkison Road, we've had a discussion going on for fifty years. We do not support anyone trying to take the land from the residents on Murkison Road, their front, the property in front of their houses. That's been a fierce fight, a fierce fight for years. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, we have no further speakers.
Right, thank you. So at that time, we will, at this time, we'll move to the public hearings. Individuals desiring to speak at tonight's public hearing must have signed up with the city clerk by name, address, before seven p.m. Fifteen minutes will be allowed for each side of the issue at the public hearing. Individual speakers will be limited to three minutes each unless by a previous arrangement, a single spokesperson is designated, in which case the spokesperson may use the entire fifteen minutes. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium. Please clearly state your name and address for the record, and may then address the City Council. When the light changes from green to amber, it means you have thirty seconds remaining. At the end of your allotted time, the timer will ring. At this time, refer to you, sir. PWC, how are you?
Good, Mayor. How are you tonight?
Good.
Mayor, members of council, I'm here before you this evening to give you a little overview on areas twenty-two and twenty-three of the Phase Five sewer extension. There will be no, no action required of you tonight. It's a public hearing, so you can hear from the citizens, and there'll be an item on your agenda next week for you to take action, which all we're doing is asking you to direct us to proceed with these next areas for construction. So this is about areas twenty-two and twenty-three for sewer, and a part of Area Twenty-three, Wells Place, will also be receiving some water. Some of the citizens do not have public water, and still get public water under our agreement with the city to do that. So Area Twenty-two, which is parts of Aaron's Lake West and Emerald Gardens, both Area Twenty-two and Area Twenty-three on Mr. Chris's district, District Six. Area Twenty-three, which is Rayconda and Wells Place, and Wells Place, as I said, with some of the citizens in Wells Place, we're getting public water. Most of them already have Aqua Water, but the ones who do not have public water will get public water as far as... get public water as far, as part of this project. So just, I'll give you a little overview of what's happened so far in this project, what's coming up, the outline for the guidelines that city council established for how the assessment will work when this project is done, and talk about what the options are for financing that assess it when it's, when it's confirmed by city council. Whoops. So we, on March twenty-third, we'll send out survey and appraisal notifications for Area Twenty-two, and on March twenty-sixth, we'll send them out for Area Twenty-three. That's basically telling the citizens, we're going to come out and survey, so we can decide if there's any easements needed from the property owners and decide where, where the line is going to go. We're finishing up the design for that area. On January twenty-eighth, the council adopted the preliminary assessment resolution, and on February eighth of this year, copies of the resolution were mailed to all the property owners that are in the boundaries of this area. So what we're going to do next is, we're going to advertise the construction, for construction bids. When construction is complete, which we expect that'll be sometime late next year, takes you a year, a year and a half to finish these projects, then we'll come to the council with a preliminary assessment role and ask you to confirm the assessments and the interest rate associated with financing those assessments. As I mentioned, some customers in Area Twenty-three will receive PWC water in accordance with the city agreement with PWC, but they will only receive one assessment. They will not receive two assessments, only receive one assessment. A typical single-family residential lot assessment is five thousand dollars. A non-single-family residential lot assessment is at the same rate per front foot. Five thousand dollars for a ninety-foot lot is fifty-five dollars and fifty-six cents per foot. So if you have a three-hundred-foot lot, at the same rate, fifty-five, fifty-six times three hundred feet, plus the average cost of the lateral for that project, and all the laterals that are installed. So if you have two laterals, it'd be twice the average cost of the lateral. No payment is due until construction is completed and the assessment rule is adopted by council. The customers can pay in full with no interest within thirty days of the council taking action to confirm the assessment, and they can finance it for up to ten years at an interest rate not to exceed eight percent by North Carolina general statute. Council policy is to establish that interest rate at prime plus two percent. That's at the, at the time of the assessment, what was, what the prime rate was on the beginning of that fiscal year. So, for example, this fiscal year, the prime rate was five percent on July first, and so any, any assessments in this fiscal year would be at seven percent interest rate. That's, that's the council policy, which of course, the council can adopt when it's time to do that. An example is, five thousand dollar assessment, if you're paying, is about sixty-five dollars a month if you assume a monthly option. Customers can pay either in monthly payments or annual payments. And, and Mayor, as they normally do, I will be here after. If any citizens have questions, we'll go to the Lafayette Room after the public hearing is over, and I'll answer their questions. I'll stay until all their questions are answered.
All right.
Okay. Any questions for me?
Uh, we'll, we'll catch you after we open the public hearing.
Okay.
Yep. So at this time, I open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, if you could call your first speaker?
Mayor, we have eight speakers signed up for this item. The first speaker is Mr. Rudolph Jones.
Thank you. I'll be short with this. I live in one of the areas that was specified by the gentleman, me and my family, of course. The, the system that is currently in my house, being used by my house, my household, is getting very close to failing. So I welcome fully that you make this a reality, and we get the, the proper, modern sewage system that we, we need in that area. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Mr. Derek Thompson.
Welcome, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmen. My name is Derek Thompson. I live at twenty-sixty-six Loganberry Drive, and I'm the president of Rayconda Home Owners Association. I'm in favor of the annexation of Phase Five for Area Twenty-three, although I have two major concerns. One, the annexation that's going to take place on Pinewood Terrace, for the people that live on Pinewood Terrace, they are adjacent to the lake. In order for them to get sewage, they would have to connect two ways. Either on Pinewood Terrace, which would be an additional cost to the residents, because they would have to pump their sewage downhill to uphill, or through the lake, which there's a sewage line. So if they decide, which they haven't decided, because PWC came to our annual meeting of a week ago today, if they decide to go through our lake and use the sewage system that's in the lake, and it's considered eminent domain to use that, will it be put back in its original configuration? My second question is, based on construction, and based on the two entrances and exits out of Rayconda, Pinewood Terrace and Sipple Avenue, pending the lawsuit Rayconda has against the city, if it's in our favor, they will have to close down Sipple Avenue. So, if you, construction on Pinewood Terrace, which leaves us only one entrance, and Area Twenty-three consists of Bedlow and Pinewood Terrace, if you're familiar with the area, that would really constrict traffic, would it be financially advisable for the city to delay Phase Five of annexation for Area Twenty-three? Thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Chet Ome. He's not, not here. Oh, okay. Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Ms. Judy Lee. Okay, thank you. Ms. Michelle Short Sleeve Garcia. Okay, thank you. Mr. Bobby Broadway.
Yes, my name is Brian Broadway, and I live at eighty-four oh six Umstead Drive here in Fayetteville, North Carolina. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak with Mr. Mayor and the rest of the council. My concern is, I don't live currently, I don't live in the, the Phase Twenty-two and the Twenty-three, but I've certainly was part of the, the overall annex on the Phase, the Phase Five. My cons, my concern is more basically what I got out of the, the newspaper last, the other day, when I was reading it about how this was progressing, because obviously, we've been waiting quite a while. We've been paying taxes quite a while for, for the sewer lines to be placed in our area. I'm not sure what, exactly which project I'm in, but last I heard, it was supposed to be completed about twenty-twenty-one. But considering this started back in two oh five, when we initially actually weren't it, weren't for the annexation, and we fought it, and we, obviously, we lost, and we were annexed, and we began paying taxes for about the last fourteen years. I'm not too concerned about what I've been told of when our particular project is going to be completed. But what struck me as odd is, and I was completely caught unaware by this, was the fact that, I guess, under a new law, anyone that you annex now, they have to have their, they get to have their sewer lines put in within two years. Now, to me, that means that those of us that have been waiting for the last fourteen years could possibly be slid back for any new annexations, and I believe the, the one in question would be the Shaw Heights area that's pending annexation. My concern is, if we waited this long, and by the way, I'm one of the thirty-five thousand senior citizen, I would love to see the sewer lines put in before I depart this, depart this world, because it's been a long time, ladies and gentlemen. And I guess what I'm looking for is some kind of assurance, because I was very surprised that a law like this could be passed, and those that had already been waiting wouldn't be grandfathered. So I don't know where we're going to be at on that, and I don't know what's going to happen in the future. But I can say this, I know that the residents in, in my area, where I live in, in, on Umstead Drive in Farrington, are going to be really upset, and, because right now, we've got, this is another odd thing about where we live. We have seventy-six, seventy-six housing units. Out of the seventy-six, thirty-six are on city sewer, and thirty-eight are on city sewer, and thirty-eight are on, are on septic tanks. And so, somewhere along, these are beginning to fail, and I, I do know that many of the residents are paying six, seven, eight hundred dollars a month just to keep their current septic tank systems going. So my concern is, are we going to get overridden by any new annex, annex, new annex, annexations, which are going to push us back even further? We've been paying taxes a long time. Thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Dennis Whaley.
Good evening. My name is Dennis Whaley. I live at two thousand nine Rayconda Road in the Wells Place subdivision. I'm a member of the Wells Place Community Service Watch, which got me involved in this. One of our residents came up to me a few months ago and was complaining about the fact that PWC was using eminent domain to take about a twenty-foot swath of her property because of a open well, had to do with the way the sewer system worked up. I went down to PWC, because I wasn't quite sure what was going on, and speaking to the people down at the PWC on Eastern Avenue, they were very informative. They helped me out. I told them I didn't know a thing about sewer systems. I did know septics, but I didn't know sewers, because I've been stuck in mine out in Arizona. And we had a meeting at our last, last month's meeting at our monthly community watch meeting, where we had some people come out from PWC, and it quite seen, clearly explained, using all of their graphs and tables that they had, who was getting sewer and who wasn't. Shortly after that meeting, I got a letter in the mail. The meeting was held the beginning of January, meeting was the beginning of January was the meeting, and I thought everything was explained. Then I get a letter in the mail on the twenty-eighth of January, which lists our subdivision, construction area Twenty-three, section two, Wells Place, sewer only. I'm on Aqua, so that didn't bother me. But I started going through this, and I know you can't see it up there, and it lists all the streets that are getting sewer, except mine. I am on the corner of Fair Forest and Rayconda Road. It, Fair Forest tees in from the northeast section of Wells Place. It comes down around and tees right into Rayconda Road. And according to all of the other charts and maps that I had read, you know, the big ones that, I don't know, you guys can't see that back there, and I know you can't, but this is what they had at our meetings that was easy to see from distance. We were supposed to get the sewer. Now, my, I called PWC, I called here at your office, I don't know which lady I spoke to here, but she said she couldn't help me, so I needed to come here and ask you this question. Am I, or am I not getting sewer out of this project? Because here I am, fighting for the other people that are getting sewers, and it looks like I'm not.
Mr. Manager, you had something to add to his question?
Do I need to get with that gentleman after the meeting to get this?
Yes, sir, but I was inquiring as to what was your address again, sir?
Two zero zero nine Rayconda Road.
Okay.
Wells Place.
Yes, sir. We will have Mark available after the meeting, and anyone for or against or ask questions, Mark will be available to meet with them next door in the Lafayette Room to explain this fully.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, our final speaker is Mr. Donald Stevens.
Donald Stevens, sixty-eight eighty-one Rayford Road. My wife and I own three contiguous properties on Rayford Road, sixty-eight eighty-one, sixty-eight eighty-seven, and sixty-eight ninety-five, which are right there on Rayford Road in a row, one right after the other. We have a number of concerns about this process. The first, which was already addressed to one degree or another by a previous speaker, residents have been paying taxes for some time now, and I think there should be some kind of equitable formula established for those residents who have been paying taxes but have not had the sewer service, to get a credit towards the cost of the assessment based on what they've already paid. The next issue is that there seems to be quite a bit of confusion speaking to PWC as far as exactly where they're going to put the easements that they are going to need. We've been given two drastically varying locations for easements. One indicating easements are going to go across the front of all three properties, and the other that easements are only going to be needed on part of all of one property and part of another property. No easement maps have been made available. The next concern, oh, and contractors, subcontractors for PWC have also been out there, and there seems to be a lot of confusion and conflict with regard to where they think the easements are going, because based on the last conversation with PWC, they think they're going in the wrong place. The next issue is that it has not been explained how the number of feet, for those of us who are going to be assessed cost per foot, is going to be calculated, and it could make a large difference. We're also, my understanding was that it was going to be either fifty-five, fifty-six a foot, or five thousand dollars flat for single-family dwellings, but now, based on what the PWC representative indicated, it seems like there's going to be an additional cost on top of that for laterals, which I don't quite understand. I really think that this hearing is somewhat premature, because a lot of questions have not been answered, and I think that we should have gotten this information before this hearing occurred. The last issue is that, is the interest charge and how it's going to affect some of the lower-income residents. It's fine and well for banks to charge interest, but I'm not sure that the city and a public utility should be burdening our lower-income residents with interest charges on top of a five thousand dollar assessment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
May we have no further speakers?
All right. So with that, we will close the public hearing, and we have...
Any questions for me?
Yes, sir. I, I did have a question for you.
Sure.
And I'm not saying this in any accusatory way, okay? I just want to know the answer to it. As the residents talked about the length of time that it's been with installations, and I know we first got on council, we had some intense discussion about accelerating that. I was riding down North Ramsey the other day, and I saw PWC's sewer lines that are doing that project that we voted for out in Elliott Farm, Elliott Bridge Road area. Are you familiar with that?
Right. They were extending the sewer main and the water main up Ramsey Street.
Right.
To serve the west, the, the growth in the north Fayetteville area.
Right. And we approved that project, what, six months ago maybe, at most? Three, four months?
Yeah, I think so, sir. We've been, I think, the, the construction was about that long ago, the, the bid for construction was about that long ago.
So how did that project accelerate so quickly? Because it was a capacity issue with Phase Five, that you said we could only do so much so quick. How did, how did that project accelerate so quickly? That's the first part of the question.
That's a good question, Mayor.
The second part is...
So go ahead, I'm sorry.
What's the, what's the timeline capacity if PWC contracts this process out, or gets a little more aggressive on the timeline to get these folks taken care of a little faster?
Okay. So, so first question, sir, the, the project going up Ramsey Street is a completely different project than the kinds of things we're doing in Phase Five. In Phase Five, we're going into existing streets and neighborhoods with existing, existing utilities, existing driveways, mailboxes, all of those things, and we're putting mains, sewer mains down the street, and laterals going into those properties. So it's a very difficult, expensive, time-consuming process. What we're doing in Ramsey Street is, we're building a sewer main and a water main in a road right away, or some private easement. So it's a much different, less time-consuming process. Okay? So that, so there's a contractor doing that, just like we have contractors doing the work in Phase Five. All right? There, there are, there is, there are limited people who are prepared to do this work that bid. The last bid we had for a Phase Five project, we only had two bidders, we had it... We had to bid it again, because we only had two bidders. So there's, even if we could produce the design faster, there's no people to do the work. So that's, that's an issue, that's one of the issues we have with how to do this. Now, when, when you first came on council, we did go through the areas and add some parcels to different areas to try and get it done faster. So we did a little bit of acceleration to do that, but it still takes time to do that, if that answers your question, sir.
It does. And out of the twenty, we're on Phase Twenty-three tonight, how many, what's the total amount of phases?
There are thirty-four total areas. And one thing I'll mention to you, so that, so we're talking about now, in Area Thirty-two and Thirty-four are areas that are affected by the I-295 construction and some other D O T road widening. So we are in the process of designing the sewer lines that will go underneath I-295 and that, so that D O T can install that as part of that project, so we can get that done now. So that is, that is a little bit of acceleration, but it's in, because we couldn't do it once Two-Ninety-five was there. So we're doing some work in those two areas. And if, I think we will probably come to you with a recommendation to serve some of those areas, because we're doing that much work, and there's so much D O T right-of-way work there, but we haven't got that plan laid out for you yet. But that's what's going out there, so just so you know that.
Okay, thank you. Councilman here.
My sentiment somewhat the same as the mayor. I, I never did like how we did the Phase Five. I mean, I'm glad to hear the support of our citizens and those that are just saying, please, 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 come on and, and give us some water, give us some sewer. I didn't support the Phase Five back years ago, so I'm, I'm just, it's my prayer that after this moment, that we'll have some positive, something positive for these citizens that have been waiting, what, eleven, twelve, however many years, once you leave the podium tonight. So I, I support what I'm hearing. I, I wish we could do more, I really do, because it's way, way overdue, overdue.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
All right. Councilman Wright?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was some concerns about the rate that we're charging citizens.
For the assessment, sir?
Yeah, for the assessment. Some of the, some of the citizens have come to me in the Phase Seventeen, Eighteen projects out, out west, and I know the timeline has passed, because, and I want you to kind of expound on how this works so the citizens can understand, because they feel like, okay, one person says, can I go pay half of my five thousand? Then can I pay the other half next year, so I won't have to be penalized with the interest rate, because I'm a single mother, have two kids, blah, blah, blah? And they said, they went to P W C to kind of get them, get you guys to work with them. Explain to the audience how, and what you have in place to work with citizens that cannot afford to pay that assessment, but trying to work with you. How can you better work with them to get this done?
Okay, so, so what happens is, when council confirms an assessment, the citizens have thirty days to pay for no interest. So they can, in any, anything they pay, so if they paid a thousand dollars within the thirty days, there will be no interest charged on that a thousand dollars. So whatever they pay in the thirty days, there'll be no interest charged, all right? Then, after that, by state statute, the council is supposed to set an interest rate which charge interest, okay? All of the money that's paid for the assessments and all of the money that's collected in interest goes directly in a reserve fund to pay for the sewer construction, all right? So that, so that's what happened. So then, once, once the thirty days up, and they can start setting us up with this right away, once you confirm the assessment, because there is no assessment until you confirm, and we can't accept payment until you confirm. But once you confirm the assessment, then the citizens have options, they have up to ten years to pay it off. They can pay it off either through monthly payments or annual payments. So if they pay some money upfront, and say two thousand dollars and a three thousand dollar left, and they can enter in a payment plan that their payment will be based on how much money they owe, whether they want to do that annually or over months, and there is no penalty, like some loans, there's a penalty for prepaying interest, there's no penalty for prepaying interest. So if they, if they pay it sooner than the payment plan, but they do have to be on a payment plan to do that, there are no credit checks. Everybody who gets assessed is eligible for financing, so there are no restrictions on anybody not being able to be financed. So there's no, they'll look at all, we don't look at anything at all, you're eligible to be financed if you've been assessed.
Thank you.
And not to mention, there's some programs we have through community development that, that allows for low-income residents to, to have portion, if not all, all of this paid.
Right. And I think it'll help, Mayor, to explain a little bit about what we do to meet with the citizens, to help walk this through the process. So when we're ready to start construction in Area Twenty-two and Twenty-three, we will have a pre-construction meeting. And so during the pre-construction meeting, we'll address some of the issues like access that was raised about if a road was closed, those kinds of things. So we talk about, with the citizens, about access. We work very closely with the citizens to make sure that we know if people have to get out on certain days because they have doctor's appointments or whatever, people going to school, we let emergency vehicles in, we'll, we'll close up the road and let people, you know, set the road up and let surgical vehicles in any time. We work very closely with the citizens about trying to make sure that access is the best we can, given the circumstances. So we do that in a pre-construction meeting. When the project is done, we have a connection meeting, where we bring representatives from the city inspection department, we bring representatives from the plumbers' association to talk about plumbers and what they recommend about how they go about getting their plumbing connections, we talk about what they have to do with us to get connected. If you connect in the first six months of the sewer being available, we waive the facility investment fee. So we waive a fee if you connect in the first six months, so that helps the citizens afford that too. And then finally, after the council acts, we hold with, in the, in the community, we hold an assessment meeting to walk the citizens through what their options are for how to pay the assessment.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Waddell?
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. Do citizens have the option of prepaying? So knowing that this is on the horizon, are they able to start paying in advance, or do they have to wait until that assessment is placed upon?
They have to wait until the council confirms the assessment. There is no assessment until you confirm it.
All right. So you said no actions needed?
No actions needed tonight. There'll be an item to direct us to proceed with construction on your agenda next week.
All right.
And I'll be in the Lafayette room if anybody has questions for me.
Uh, Councilman Chris?
I do need to make a comment. The pre-construction meeting is a very important meeting. I would encourage those of you here home on the association, President, to encourage all of your residents to attend that meeting. P W C will have a team there, and that team will be able to answer, I'd say ninety-nine percent of the questions raised at that time. Also, there will be people there from the plumbers' association that will talk to you about laterals. Lateral is where you hook on to the main trunk, and that's the line that goes from the trunk to your home. They will be there, and then there are even plumbers that might give a discount if they can sign a group, a number of citizens in the same neighborhood. That, I don't want to underemphasize, and I'm certainly not overemphasizing, that pre-construction meeting is probably the most important meeting that you're going to have concerning this. Yes, you're going to be inconvenienced. It takes about a year, and you're going to be living in a mudhole every time it rains, but there's just no other way to get it done. We can answer every question that I heard tonight. We can answer every question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. I did, before you, before you left, Mr. Brown, there was a comment about Sipple, I think it was, if litigation goes forward, then if it's favorable, have you planned for...
We, for example, the area that's under construction right now, Twenty and Twenty-One, has a situation that when we're working in certain areas of the area, that it's, there is only one access. So like when, when we're blocking certain, when we're in certain places, you could, there's only one way out, which is through where we're at. When we're out of those areas, you can go around us. So we work very closely with that. We know that, that right now there are waits there, but we're very sensitive to the waits, we're very sensitive to the needs of people to get in and out, and for emergency vehicles to get in. So our contractors are very much on top of staying, staying alert so people can get access in and out, and emergency vehicles can get in any time. So if we have that situation, we've had it before, and we'll work around it, okay? We prefer to have two entries and exits, because inconveniences to citizens a lot less, but we'll work around it if that is the situation.
All right. And the last question, will there be any impact if they use the sewer system that is under the lake?
So, so the citizen asked a good question, okay? We don't yet know, because we're still finalizing design, where we, where the citizen will connect, and he's correct. If, if the house, the place in the house where the sewer line comes out to the septic tank, if it's below where our sewer main is, since sewer flows downhill, they will have to put a grinder pump in to force the sewer into our main where it flows by gravity. So depending, we, we look at all those things, we don't really want to put a grinder pump in if we can. So if there is a sewer line behind the house that's lower, and we can go to that, then that would be less expensive to do that. But we design that with the idea, what's the less expensive way? We try not to put grinder pumps in if we can avoid it, because it's an extra cost. We do have a program to help pay for grinder pumps if people do have to put grinder pumps in, okay? But it's, you know, it's basically, it's an engineered solution, so depending on the situation, a lot of it depends on what we have to do to make sure that the sewer will work.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much for your time.
All right.
I'm in the Lafayette room, everybody needs me.
All right. Council, we'll take about a ten-minute break. Be right back.
Of the Cumberland County Bar Association, we're recommending Counselor Tracy Henderson. For the Fayetteville Advisory Committee on Transit, in fact, the bus rider, we're recommending Corey Hannibal. The ADA representative, we're recommending Ms. Marsha Jones. Out of Area Affairs Service, Michelle Clark and Joanna Quick. For Fair Housing Commission, we're recommending Eduardo Jordan. Fayetteville Cumberland Economic Development Commission, we're recommending Mr. Bobby Slugs, reappointment, and Mr. Michael McCollum. McCollum. The North Carolina Firefighters Relief Fund Board of Trustees, firefighter Calvin Bishop. The Historic Resources Commission, historical district property owner Bruce Arnold, licensed registered architect Gordon Johnson, realto-development general contractor Henry Tyson, historic preservationist, cultural or social historian Jeremy Feebig or Feibig, building designer or land use design professional, Mr. Thomas Batson. Also, William Bass, Tiffany Catchem, and Kenan Jackson. For the Human Relations Commission, we are recommending William Milton. And then for the Linea Park Incorporated, Charmetri Rice-Bullock. For Personnel Review Board, Latanya Stewart, Deborah Slaughter, Donna Noldy. Public Arts Commission, Bryant Sullivan, Amanda Mitchell. Redevelopment Commission, Romnick Kapapas, Wilbert Stokes, Devon Newton, and Raven McCoy. These, Mr. Mayor and Council, are our recommendations to you for appointment to the various boards and commissions as we have stated.
Thank you, Councilmember Chris. Councilmember here?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, tell me, what is your process, or the city's process, for a person becoming a commission member of any of these boards, or just the whole process?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We advertise through the city clerk's office for all of these boards and commissions that have vacancies. At that time, citizens provide applications in writing to the city clerk's office. These are compiled into a book, but prior to that, the clerk's office verifies whether or not they are, in fact, city residents. That's important in order to serve on our boards and commissions, and whether they are, in fact, eligible to serve. In the event of some of these, the questions are always asked for all of them, is there anyone who's an employee of the city or council member that might prove conflict of interest for some of the appointees? Once the book is put together, two things happen. The clerk's office sends an electronic version of that book to us, which is available to all the council members, and a hard copy of the book is given to each of us on the appointments committee for us to peruse each and every one of these. Now, the process that I use is very simple. If we're looking for one person, for example, let's say we need one person for Human Relations Commission, and we have five applications, and generally, the applicants specify, if they apply for more than one board, they will specify in order the boards that they want. We try to give them their first choice. In the event that we have, say, five applicants for one position, then each of us independently go through our book and rate those five individuals, one through five, in my order of preference, all right? Then when we come to the meeting at the table, then we ask over which of the person of that five is the one that we will select.
So, if I understand correctly, so this very, very, very simple and easy process to become a commissioner of any of our boards is simply to fill out the application and be a citizen of the city of Fayetteville?
Well, that's part of the criteria, but I won't say it's simple because I'll tell you why. We've got a lot of people that apply over and over again and have not been picked. For example, in some of these commissions, we may have as many as eight or nine applicants, and we only get to select two, or even one. And so, we go past people over and over again. Many of them continue to apply, some of them, and their application is good for one year, one year. Many of them will fill out applications again and apply for other boards and commission. I'll give you a case in point. One, at our last approval, we appointed a commissioner to the PWC. One of the ladies that applied for PWC came to the meeting, which is open, did not get selected, and she put in another application, this time for the Airport Commission, and she did get elected for, or we're recommending her on the Airport Commission. It's not an easy process. We don't, in a lot of cases, one or more of us personally know a lot of these people, and that helps. We also encourage council members to come to the meeting because you can provide us some input on some of these that you know, in particular, of those that you think may not be suited for a particular board, even though they applied for that board or commission.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just had some citizens that were inquiring of the process. Thank you.
It's tough, and, and we're not looking at the person in front of us, we're looking at the person on paper, and that's always a hard proposition to figure out which one is the best. And, and, and sometimes we have people, I'll say this, that we feel may be a bit overqualified for some of these commissions. Mr. Mayor, back to you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman here, any more questions?
I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, uh, so, Mr. Chris, uh, your recommendation was, uh, was two separate motions. One was to accept this?
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I may, at this time, I would move that council make the appointments based on the recommendations from the Appointed Commission.
Okay.
On this committee.
Okay. Councilman, wait a minute.
I'm sorry.
Are, are those votes or, or second? So, that's the second, Councilman Dawkins? Okay, so, we have a second, uh, motion by Councilmember Chris, second by Councilmember Dawkins, now discussion. So, Councilmember Jensen, is that a discussion?
Yeah.
Councilman Wright?
Yes, sir. Um, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to kind of, um, ask a question concerning the, uh, the tweaking of the actual amendment in case something there needs to be, and I know you are saying that we need to actually have this going in order to establish...
We haven't got to. You're talking, if you're talking about the bylaws, we'll come into that next, Councilman Wright, okay? Right now, we're dealing with the appointments.
Yes, the appointments.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any further questions on this portion of, uh, presentation? All right, so, all right, Council, I'll look to you for votes to adopt, uh, the...
Recommendations.
Enclosed recommendations. Uh, Councilman...
Oh, it's in screen.
Madam Clerk, that is unanimous? All right.
Yeah, the second part of our report this evening deals with the Fayetteville North Carolina Millennial Advisory Commission bylaws. As you very well know, sir, you moved forward to, uh, set forth in motion a process in which those young people between the ages of nineteen and thirty-nine have an active voice in recommendations to the city council and to the city staff. Based on that, you gave us the mission to formulate some bylaws for this committee. The first draft of the bylaws were presented by some of the people interested in serving on the Millennial Advisory Council. The second iteration of the bylaws were worked very diligently by Dr. Telly Whitfield, Assistant City Manager. Following that, Bill Chris worked on an iteration of those constitution, not constitution, uh, bylaws. We then had a meeting, and the meeting consisted of, uh, incidentally, the city attorney weighed in on the draft as well. But at the actual meeting, we had myself, Councilwoman Jensen called in, uh, Councilwoman Waddell was present, Mr. Sam Bradford from the city attorney's office, Dr. Telly Whitfield was there, uh, Mrs. Hill was also there, and did I leave out anybody that had a voice on the commi... And, Mr. Mayor, we took the drafts, and we went line by line, through every line of what you have in front of you this evening. Now, I will say this to you. This is the charter. Once we approve this, this then gives young people the opportunity to apply. This, this formally establishes a millennial advisory commission by these bylaws, which you vote tonight if you approve it. This then gives citizens out there the opportunity to submit applications for appointment to the Millennial Advisory Commission based on these bylaws. There are a couple of things in there that will need tweaking once the commission up, is up and running. First of all, there are, there are portions in here that speaks to how the first iteration of board members will be selected slash elected. And once we're past that first iteration, these bylaws will very likely call for an amendment to that particular standing. Secondly, we are concerned about staff support. There are some in favor of Mrs. Crystal Glover, but then there are others that simply feel that, uh, the bylaws should be that we have a council liaison, as most of our commissions do, and a staff liaison without name in that. And so, there are some things. But the importance of this document tonight is to move forward so that people can begin to submit their applications for appointment to this committee. Yes, we will have to come back and tweak these bylaws. Having said that, before I make, well, let me make a motion, and then we'll go for discussion. I move that the council approve these drafts, Millennial Advisory Commission bylaws.
Second.
Uh, so, we have a motion by Councilmember Chris, a second by Councilmember Wright. As part of the discussion, I, I thank you and the appointments committee, uh, Mr. Chris. We have an incredible amount of interest and, and a lot of enthusiasm, uh, from the, the people who fit this particular demographic in the city. One of our colleagues being one, uh, was recognized, and we have an incredible amount of talent. Do we want to make sure that we, uh, don't allow that enthusiasm to, to dampen? Now, I, I agree with you. I think it's an ideal approach that the appointments committee, uh, as, as the council discusses the staff support, you know, the manager brought up a very interesting point that said that if it's person-specific, if there's a change, then, then that leaves us in a situation that possibly, if we could approve this based on, uh, just to allow the process to move forward and allow the appointments committee to maybe come back and work out the staff support piece, I think would be a, uh, pretty respectable compromise. But, uh, I will open the floor for discussion. I know there's a, a motion, a second. I see Councilmember Waddell.
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. One of the things that we communicated about while we were in the meeting was the staff support, and I think that we asked for Ms. Hill to go back and look and see, or, not Ms. Hill, we asked for Ms. Air to go back and look and see how other committee's staff support was set up. And so, if we were to keep with that, then it would be under, I'm, I'm guessing Fayetteville Parks and Recs versus having a, a name. Because, for example, we looked at the Fayetteville Human Relations Commission, and it falls under, um, Dr. Anthony Wade is the staff liaison, but it's under, help me, Mr. Crisp.
Uh, I don't know who the council liaison is for that one.
The staff liaison, it's under his department versus under his name. Is that correct?
They say that Dr. Wade or Mimiel.
But is it under their name?
No, it is under, um...
Department.
It's under, right. So, if we were to keep with that, then I guess, then that would be the only, the only difference. And we did have that discussion ad nauseam during that meeting to try to figure out what the, the appropriate way to, to title that was.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Jensen?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I am probably the one that was most adamant about Ms. Glover being part of this, and, and I want to explain my reasoning in this. This is a new, a new committee that we're setting up, just like we did the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council, and I understand that the youth council is minors, and they're eighteen and under, and I understand that. But I do understand that this is a new committee, and nobody wants it to succeed more than I do. But I think that we need to give them everything that they need to succeed. And I feel, I, I, I personally feel, and I'm very adamant about it, that I think that Ms. Glover, under Parks and Recreation, is an asset that will allow them to be who they are and allow them to express themselves because she is part of the millennial, and I'm not saying she's in charge of them or she's going to tell them what to do, but I think that she would be such a great asset that all the training that we have given her in her city job to make it successful, and that it's not just the realm of Fayetteville, that she knows how everybody else is doing it. She's been, she's seen. Now, does she need to be there for, you know, the next ten years? No. But to get it started and to make it successful, I really feel that we need to give them every bit, and I don't want to say ammunition, but you know, everything that we can give them to succeed, I think we should. Um, I, I am, I'm very, um, passionate about it because I've seen what getting a new look and giving a new committee something that we need, which I applaud you, Mr. Mayor, for bringing this up, but we have to give them the tools to succeed, and that's where I am kind of adamant. Now, I don't like making decisions at the eleventh hour because we did have a meeting. I was very passionate and, and said my words in the meeting, so that's where I'm having my issues at, um, saying not a staff member because this is the first I'm hearing about it, two minutes before we're getting ready to vote. So, that's where I stand. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and, and I just wanted to say that I, I, I'm, this is definitely not a question of our motives. I think we all have the motives. Council's made this a priority. This is important to all of us based on our previous votes. Uh, I was saying that based on some of the functions and duties that the committee fleshed out in this document, that it was quite expansive, and so, imposed to the council, who's a policy board, getting into which staff member worked best, uh, to fit into the organization, I would prefer that maybe the committee work with the manager to see which one of his staff members or which departments he, he recommended, how, how it fit into the overall organization. Because I think that we can have one perception of, as to what we would consider, we'll take this person and use the attributes that we know about this person and arm this group with it, but it may organizationally not fit into, to the other sixteen hundred people that the manager has. So, I think he, you know, my recommendation would be that the committee can work in a, in a lot more detailed manner, uh, to work with him, if we, we approve this, to work with him to see who or what department that staff member is, but to name it by department or function rather than a person. Because any, you know, any, people come and go in organizations, and, and I wouldn't want, you know, this has nothing to do with Ms. Glover from my perspective, but I wouldn't want you to base all of what you just said around her and her attributes. And, you know, say she leaves the organization tomorrow, where does it leave this, this, this initiative?
Can I...
Sure.
So, so what, again, what I was saying is, I'm not saying that it needs to be under her for, you know, the next ten years. I'm saying just to get it started. Now, if you want to compromise on this, you know, what you're telling me now is that we're going to make the decision, and then it'll go back to the city manager, and he'll decide which department this is under.
In the appointments committee, he'll work with you.
Well, if you want me to make a, I am going to try to make a compromise, but it, to me, I feel it needs to go into Parks and Rec. I, I, that's what I feel, and if we can't come to a, you know, consensus, that's fine, and we can bring it back and have a discussion, but again, that's where I stand.
Okay. Uh, Councilman Wright?
Uh, yes. The age group for this millennium, uh, council will be from, what age group? I, I thought I read that in, in the document.
Nineteen to...
It's nineteen to thirty...
Thirty-nine.
To thirty-nine. And when you look at a thirty-nine-year-old person, that person is pretty mature at, at that age. So, uh, it's not like we're dealing with the youth council. Uh, this is another level of citizens' involvement, and when you're talking about millenniums, um, I think we, and I agree with everything that has been said, but I think this new setup for the millennial council, these people have visions and ideas, and this is why I think the mayor visualized it, uh, initially to kind of set it up, uh, but we want to really set them up for success. And I don't, just my personal opinion, that this is bigger than, I think, um, a particular department. I think that, uh, these people will sit to, uh, have ideas and, uh, for a broader scope of the city, and so, Parks and Rec is, is, is what it is, Parks and Rec. But I, I think that that probably the millenniums could have some say in that, but I think we need to, um, not box them in, but allow them to be free to, to, to dream, to have visions, to have input, and don't kind of categorize them out of the gate. How that might look, I don't know, but, uh, I think we need to look at that perspective. It's not like they're a youth council, but these are grown folk, uh, for the most part, but it will be a balance of youth and young adults at that time with a different kind of perspective and a different type of vision for the future. And I think if we bring them to the table and have an ear to really hear what they have to say, then I think we'll get a, a, a great surprise from that group.
And, and let me say this, uh, I, I was in attendance of several town hall discussions, and, and when I started having those discussions, I had further discussions with people that just associated me with the process and voiced their opinion. The conversations that came up were not just recreational amenities, they were, how do we attract better jobs here? How do we provide economic opportunities? So, I agree that, that, you know, this may take some more conversation, but it, this is larger than just Parks and Recreation amenities. Yeah, and I'm, and I'm not saying that, this is my perspective with what they've said. Most people who, when they plan on where they live, want to know what type of job opportunities are available, how can I take care of my family, how is housing affordable? And there are just several components that they brought to me. See, this was a citizen listening tour, that we've got to allow this group to engage and to be free to expand on all of these things, and you all nailed it with the functions. It says, the first thing that it says is to, uh, is, is that the commission is dedicated to improving the quality of life to young people by providing recommendations and programs and actions that fit within our strategic goals, and our strategic goals are broader than Parks and Recreation.
Mr. Mayor, may I, uh, I think the, the central issue here that's holding us up for the moment is staff support.
Yes.
Who will provide, who or what department will provide staff support? In that vein, would it be out of the ordinary to call on the city manager for his, where he stands on this?
I think it would be appropriate. He has to manage this person.
Um, thank you, Mayor and Mr. Crisp. Um, I, I don't disagree with, um, anything that has been said. We have some amazing staff people here in the organization, and early on, when it was something that was being said about, um, who, uh, might be able to help with this, there was conversation, um, that I participated in and don't disagree, that Ms. Glover, um, has all the skills and attributes to make that very successful. But as the mayor also said, this will be larger than one person, at least in order to get it off of the ground. And so, the suggestion that, um, I would make would be that the bylaws, as you have drafted them, um, sound really good. The only thing that I would ask is that you just put down, um, or designate, as it relates to the staff liaison. It will be Ms. Glover, and it'll probably be Ms. Glover and Dr. Whitfield for the initial couple of months, but this document will have, will go into the minutes, will go into the book that Pam has about all of the mission and vision, um, statements that we have for the, um, for all of the other boards and commissions that you have, and those do not have a particular staff person specifically mentioned or referenced. But again, it will in all likelihood, unless she comes back and says she's too busy or she doesn't feel she has the skills, which I don't think either one of those is likely, um, be, um, Ms. Glover and, um, Dr. Whitfield, um, helping to get this off of the ground, and once they are up off the ground, I agree with the mayor, I think this group will be largely self-directed. They will need a staff liaison, but probably more so than anything else, they'll need a resource person to help with minutes and calendaring of their various meetings and putting together the agendas. And we would probably, um, look to either the clerk's office to help with that initially, but if it is something that will long-term be in Parks and Rec, then we would probably try to find a resource person, um, to help Ms. Glover and Dr. Whitfield out of that department.
So, are you...
So, I'm very comfortable with how it's drafted, but I would recommend that, um, you not list, uh, Mrs. Glover by name in this document, just say staff designate, um, but again, it will be Mrs. Glover and likely Dr. Whitfield.
So, are you saying staff support...
Provided by the manager.
Will be provided by city manager's office, or...
By the city manager or designate. Yes, sir.
By city manager or designate?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I have no problem amending my motion to that extent that we moved to approve these bylaws with that simple change in that subparagraph that staff support will be provided by city manager or designate. If the person seconded will, uh...
Councilman Wright, I think you would have seconded on it.
Yes, sir. I will, uh, I'll receive that.
Having, having amended the motion, now we're for discussion again, I guess, Mr. Mayor.
All right. So, there's, there's been an amendment to the motion by Councilmember Chris, and agreeable second by Councilmember Wright, and there is further discussion. Councilmember Waddell?
Thank you, sir. I, I want to very briefly, um, for the, for the purposes of our listening audience, I want to very briefly do two things. First, I want to say I think that we need not under, undervalue, and this is not an indictment against any member of this council, I think we need not undervalue our, our FCYC program. I think that what we might want to consider at some point in the future is an expansion of their role in how they work for the city and with the city because we have seen a number of youth councils across the nation at NLC, and they are very active in many of these functions that are listed for this group that are the millennial. I think that the, the, the flow, the, the thought process for me was that there's a natural progression from being on the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council to moving toward working with the millennial council. And when we talk about thirty-nine-year-olds, of which I am one for a few more weeks, when we speak of my demographic, we're really not the focus of this millennial council. We're at the very top end, so they're leaving soon. We're really looking at those nineteen-year-olds who are coming out because we want some sustainability with this, this conversation. So, when we look at them, being able to be kind of groomed at this level and learning from the, the lessons that have come out of FCYC and moving into the work that will be going in, and if you look at the points, advise on economic development, social matters as well as potential actions affecting young adults, help develop initiatives on attracting and keeping young residents, innovate, execute, and sustain diverse and inclusive network connections, connect young adults to engagement opportunities, assist in the dissemination of current and accurate information, provide and encourage leadership development, create mentorships and serve as role models for youth, actively participate in group discussions, use digital tools and people power, contribute individually and lead, manage, or participate in group projects, obtain sponsorships. This is the same work that our youth council does, and so, for us to say that it's not a, it might not, it might be bigger than what we have already would be very inaccurate. I think it's synonymous. I think it's synonymous, it's just tapping into the next dimension. So it's taking the piece that we've been missing, because we had the youth, and then we had the, us, you know, I don't even know what you call us, the old people, I guess is what they would call us.
Speak for yourself, ma'am.
Not me, though, y'all. But now you have that demographic that has been missing, that voice, and I think it is a very natural progression. So I'm in support of it falling under Parks and Recs, unless we're going to create some whole other function at the city and hire a whole new staff. I don't necessarily think that any other, any other group or organization within the city would be as prepared to take on this as would be Ms. Glover and her team. And I, to the city manager's point, I do agree that maybe we should not put a name on it, which goes back to our initial conversation, where we said, okay, well, what are the other commissions doing, and let's remain synonymous with that. So that is, that's my two cents for what it's worth.
Thank you, ma'am. Worth a lot. Councilmember Crisp?
Mr. Mayor, one more time. The reason I amended my motion is because I had to think about policy versus management. We are policy. It's entirely up to the city manager for management, and management includes management of the staff. It is not a good idea for us to begin to tell the city manager by name who we want to serve on a particular board or commission. For that reason only, I'm listening to the city manager. He also said it probably will be Ms. Glover's involvement in there, along with Dr. Whitfield initially, but I think we have to be very cautious about crossing the line and beginning to dictate to the city manager who I want out of the police department to be on duty here in City Hall when we have council meetings.
I want Chief Hawkins.
Huh? You want Chief Hawkins here, right? But you understand what I'm saying, and that's why, I'm going to shut up now. That's why I amended the motion.
Yes, sir.
Because I think we're encroaching into management when we begin to tell the city manager we want one or more of his people by name. Now, if the people he gives us to support this are not to our liking, then we'll talk about the city manager, maybe in a closed session. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. All right, council. Got, okay. Councilmember Jensen? Okay. This is, that is your red light.
That's our third time.
All right. Councilmember Jensen?
And I'll keep on going. So...
Two rounds.
You get two rounds.
Only time I've ever had two rounds. So I will say to you is, thank you, Councilwoman Waddell. You said it very eloquently, and you said exactly what I was trying to put out there. What, the reason why I'm adamant about Parks and Rec, I, Ms. Glover would be perfect. I see it in my head, but that's okay. I will compromise out, but I believe that it still should be Parks and Rec, is because I have traveled to NLC, and I have been with our youth council, and I have seen what they put out and how they keep coming back, and there's a whole world out there, and I do agree with Councilmember Waddell, is don't put what we're doing with the youth council to be a small thing. It's a big thing, and the millennial council is going to be just as big or bigger, and it's our job to make sure they get everything that they can and all the knowledge that we have outside of Fayetteville and with Fayetteville to make it a success. So with that being said, I will compromise, but I will hold the city manager accountable if we don't like who he picks.
Heard that, Douglas? All right. And tonight's vote is about the millennial advisory group, not the youth council, okay? So let's get back to...
One other thing.
Right. I got my light on, Mr. Mayor.
One other thing.
All right, well, listen.
I know, I failed to commend...
All right. Councilmember Wright?
Ms. Jennifer Ayers did a tremendous amount of work, and I didn't mention her name when I mentioned all the people that was working on it, and I would be remiss not bringing her into the picture. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Wright, briefly, and then we've got a vote.
Just briefly, Mr. Mayor, and I think we've kind of got off track, but I want to kind of clarify some things, because it sounds like they're saying that we're not valuing our young people or our youth council, and that's far, far from what's true. If we're talking about, you know, a progress or progression from our youth into the millennium, I agree with that 100%. I've been to those conferences, I've seen youth in action, and I'm with youth 100%. I brought up the number, the age group, and maybe, maybe somebody need to help me with this. So are we developing the millennial council for the sole purpose of converting or developing and merging our youth council into the millennium council? Are we doing that?
No.
I didn't think so. And so what we're looking at with the millennial council is setting up a whole new council of community individuals from every spectrum, male, female, teenage, middle adults, to have another perspective. And so when we talk about Parks and Rec, help me with the vision that you have, Mr. Mayor, of this millennial council and how they would impact the city going forward. Because I'm not understanding, are they just strictly Parks and Rec?
Well, let me just say this, you know, 6,000 to 7,000 people exit the military in Fayetteville every year, okay? A great portion of those folks fit into this demographics. We have people that move in and out of our transit community year after year. So the youth council can be one pipeline that feeds this, but it should not be the only pipeline that feeds it. So I think that as this group forms, I think that we allow these folks to select their leadership, allow them to do what it is that they are capable and able to do, so that they'll be engaged, and then they'll bring suggestions back to us. Some of them, the council will act on, some of them we will not, just like any other advisory board. We had three presentations tonight of different advisory boards, and we accepted the report. Now, that didn't mean that we've drawn it into our strategic plan, didn't mean that we've funded it, didn't mean any of that. It meant that we had citizens who gave up their time to come and be a part of what happens in their city. That's what I envisioned the same group doing. I think we have, Mr. Manager, did you have something to say? Because we're ready to vote at this point, sir.
No, sir.
All right. All right, council, we've had our discussions, it's time to vote. So at this time, the motion on the floor was by Councilmember Crisp, it was a second by Councilmember Wright, to accept these bylaws with the staff appointment by the city manager, and we will trust that he will do what's in the spirit of this council tonight. All right, so look for your votes. Councilman Cullerton?
Green.
Madam Clerk, that motion...
All greens, Mayor.
Is unanimous. Thank you, council. This is cutting-edge stuff. We are the only city that I'm aware of in North Carolina that have established one of these, and so it was not to be easy, so you have to be congratulated. All right, item 10.02, refunding outstanding matuities general obligation bonds. Money man, Mr. Tolan.
Mayor, thank you, city council. Jay Tolan, CFO, tonight I'll be requesting two votes to start the process for refunding 2005 general obligation debt. The first vote is going to be for a resolution of issuance of general obligation refunding bonds, then the second one will be for the order to authorize a 2.6 million general obligation refunding bonds. So with this, it's basically a refinancing, will save $160,000. The net present value will be $145,000 we'll save, because we'll save this over five years. So is there any questions before I, there's a couple paragraphs I need to read, is there any questions before I read those paragraphs? All right. Resolution making certain findings and determinations and authorizing the filing of an application with the local government commission in connection with the proposed issuance of general obligation refunding bonds of the city. And so that's the first one, then I would need a motion to accept the resolution for refunding 2005 general obligation debt.
I move to accept the resolution.
And thank you, Councilmember Crisp. It's a motion, and it's a second by Councilmember Ayer. Any discussion on the motion? All right. Council, look to you for action on this first item.
Cullerton's green.
All right. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, it's unanimous.
Thank you. The second one is the order authorizing $2.6 million in general obligation refunding bonds.
Explain that.
All right. Need a motion?
Yes, sir.
A motion by Councilmember Wright, is there a second?
I second.
Okay. A second by Councilmember Crisp. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes, sir. Ask Mr. Tolan to explain that.
All right. Councilmember Crisp.
I understand it, but I want to make sure.
So basically, this is having the, this is authorizing the city to apply to the LGC, the local government commission...
Local government commission.
To refund a maximum of $2.6 million of debt. We have five years left in payments, so we'll refinance it at a lower interest rate, saving on interest cost.
Saving approximately $240,000.
$160,000, but in real money, it'll be 145,000, because we'll realize it over five years.
Well, I thought there was another aspect to that over time, that would take that up to saving us about 240. Did I misread that?
I'm not going to say you misread it, but it's 160, but 145 real value.
160, but 145, we're almost assured.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Council, any other questions? And we, so we do, we had a motion by Councilmember Wright, and it was a second by Councilmember Crisp. All right. Council, I look to you for your votes. Councilman Cullerton?
Cullerton is green.
Cullerton is green. All right. Madam Clerk, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That's the easiest presentation about money you ever had, isn't it? That's right. All right. Was that, both of them? All right. All right. Council, entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move, sir.
Have a good evening.